Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the February thirteenth meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you take roll?
Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Escobal.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Laborne.
Here.
Dr. Rennie.
Present.
And Mr. Roywell.
Present.
One member is absent, Mary. We do have a crime.
Would you all join me, please, in the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oops, sorry.
Next item is number four, consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body's request and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right. Is there any items a member of this governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Mr. Seagrave, and seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the consent agenda is approved.
Next item is seven A, public hearing for a transfer of ownership of retail liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Wyoming Horse Racing LLC. Doing business as Horse Palace, lot one, block one, Swan Ranch rail park, sixteen filing Cheyenne, Wyoming, license currently held by Port Richards, doing business as Port Richards.
All right, at this time, we'll open it up for anyone who'd like to speak. Madam, did you want to do a staff report or just do the public comment?
Just the public comment unless you'd like me to get one.
That's fine. Please come forward, sir. There you go.
Fantastic. Good evening, city council members, Mayor Collins. I will speak very slowly because, as you can understand, I'm not born and bred in Wyoming. I am a proud American citizen, though, so. We, I am-
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Of course. Nick Hughes. I'm the president of Wyoming Horse Racing and a set of racing and gaming, who are the owners of WHR. Nick Hughes. We currently operate nine OTB operations throughout Wyoming. We are based at the Sweetwater racetrack where we run sixteen races per year. And that allows us to have OTB licenses, and from those OTB licenses, we can run the paramutual games of what is known as HHR, historical horse racing. We have plans and purchased land in both Cheyenne and Evanston to open what we call touristic OTBs. They're different from what currently operates locally. These are on the borders, obviously, of Utah and Colorado, and they're designed to attract out-of-state gaming dollars to create in-state tax payments. We have been very fortunate that both Laramie and Euenta counties have expressed strong support, has have the cities, and thankfully, Mayor Collins, thank you, sir, of yours. We, the best way to think about this is that it has to be an enter each one, but we're dealing with Cheyenne tonight. Each one needs to be an entertainment center. It can't be purely gaming. It can't. Within thirty to sixty minutes, we have nearly seven hundred thousand people across the border in Colorado, and they're not going to travel to just a gaming area. So we need to be a multifaceted entertainment center. We purchased forty acres on the Swan Ranch development, and we are planning for approximately three hundred unit location for the gaming, but also restaurants, a stage, various other entities. We're also looking, we're in discussions with three different companies, major companies, to put a hotel there as well, in excess of a hundred rooms. Because, again, we cannot be one thing. We have to be something that would attract the people to travel to us. We estimate that seventy-six percent of the people that would come would be out-of-state players. We already have two locations in Cheyenne. Cheyenne has enough local OTBs. It doesn't need, in my opinion, it doesn't need anymore. This is not designed for that. This is designed to attract out-of-state dollars to Wyoming. The location is in Spear Road, as we've said. To give you an idea, just for Cheyenne, just for Cheyenne, we would create or generate two point six million in tax revenue between the state, the city, and the county. We would also produce, because we are a racing company, horse racing company, we are horse people. I own horses and a horse farm. The Cheyenne location alone, the touristic OTB, would produce another seven hundred thousand dollars in purse money for Wyoming-bred horses. And I can't stress how important that is to have home-bred horses racing in Wyoming. But it needs to be financially viable for the owners, the trainers, the jockeys, everybody. So when just Cheyenne, just this one location, would produce seven hundred thousand dollars in annual breeder's fund, that's a major number. The total amount we would invest in the location, the building, the equipment, the construction, is two point five, sorry, twenty-five million, slightly over, twenty-five point three million dollars. It will produce sixty full-time employees. These are conservative numbers. We're going to build so that if the demand from Colorado is sufficient, we can expand, and we would expand in all ways, including local jobs. The temporary construction employment would be a hundred and fifty construction workers coming here. The purses, which obviously purses fuel entries into our race states, we would produce five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue towards purchases once it's open. We're looking to transfer the retail liquor license from Paul Richards. It's an existing license, but I don't believe it's in operation. We purchased it. We would transfer that to the touristic OTB. So again, it would become a revenue generating license. Construction is already fully engaged. We purchased the land. We began the construction. We have, we obviously, unfortunately, the famous Wyoming weather put us a little bit back. We're waiting for the land to stop being quite so frozen, but we have the infrastructure in. It's there. If you go there now, you will actually see curbing, and it will give you an idea. Within the next two months, I believe we'll have infrastructure and utilities there. All vendors, all vendors are Wyoming-based, so we don't go outside. Our general contractor is from outside because we've worked with that particular person and company before. But everybody to do with the building and the construction is all Wyoming vendors, so we're very keen to keep that money that we're investing within Wyoming. As I've noted, we've got thirty-six, actually close to forty acres of land there. This needs to be amenity-driven. Apart from the hotels, we're looking at what other amenities might be used to bring people. And for these reasons, we cannot invest that level of money without ensuring that we have all the amenities necessary to make this work, and that includes the retail liquor license. So I understand it will be parked. We understand that we should, depending on the weather, we hopefully will be open before the end of this year, hopefully. And we should be, weather permitting, but we do need to be that entertainment center that will draw people from Colorado. For that reason, we respectfully and gratefully ask that we be allowed to transfer the existing license, retail license from Paul Richards to Swan Ranch location. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask.
Anyone on the governing body have a question for the developer? Mr. Laborne?
Thank you. That's very interesting. We're a long way from Sweetwater County, and is there any conceptualization of live racing anywhere closer? I mean, isn't Gillette doing it now as well?
Yeah, Gillette does it through Camplex, and so that's existing. And then you've got Wyoming Downs, the third operator. They operate out of Evanston at Wyoming Downs that they own. We lease the racing facilities at Sweetwater during the months of racing, but we're not the owner. It's own governmental.
Well, it'd be great if we had live racing closer.
I agree. I agree a hundred percent. The issue is, it would be great. I mean, I'm an horse owner, so, you know, for me, it would be a great thing to do. We did at one point try to talk to Frontier Days if there would be any possibility to do something there. They are so busy with all the other things that they do, and the construction is major. I was one of the owners of Kentucky Downs, and to give you an idea, we bought forty acres at Swan Ranch. Kentucky Downs had three hundred and thirty-six acres. It's a huge, you know, the stalls, the stalls are just immense. You normally have to have about five hundred, six hundred stalls, even if you were only racing sixteen days. Would it be great? Yes, it would. The investment in the land is huge, but we would do everything we can to support the horse racing industry here in Cheyenne and in Laramie County. And whatever we could do to make that happen, that would be great. But I think it would take a syndicate of operators because the cost is just immense, and the land requirement is huge.
Thank you. Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, through you. So, Mr. Hughes, I know that you're hoping to finish by the end of the year. I'm curious about security and emergency responders. Obviously, with an operation that size, you're going to have a security force and with the type of activities that are going on there. And I'm guessing that you'll probably have some sort of emergency response group. What is the plan to work with our existing law enforcement and fire responders? And then I also was curious about your starting wage for your entry-level employees.
Really good questions. The, we, because of the gaming side of things, and also because of the horse racing side of things, although obviously there's not going to be a track here. We're very heavily invested and experienced in the security aspect. We would have a multimillion-dollar surveillance and security system. Cameras would be probably in the region of about sixty to seventy cameras. Most of them would be PTZs, which are pan-tilt zooms, which allow you to have multiple views and move what you're looking at. We would have EMS-trained personnel. We, in our previous incarnations in other locations, not with this company. We have been very proactive, not just active, but proactive with the emergency response units, the police especially. But we're not, we're not a police force. We're not looking for heavy-handed security officers. The security officers to us are an extension of the welcome. We do not interact with troublemakers. We just do what we can to calm the situation and move them outside. We don't get, believe it or not, despite all the things you might see in the movies, we don't get a huge amount of problems. In our nine locations, we've not had. And Wyoming horse racing is the longest-established OTB operator in the state. We have a handful, if that, in all those years, since 2014, of any incidents. You know, it's, we're a very, I use this description, we're a mom-and-pop operation. The touristic OTBs will be much bigger, but that's because, and the services will expand, but we're very security-conscious and we're very safety-conscious. Our biggest assets is not the money. Our biggest assets is our customer base and our staff. Their safety comes above all else.
You want to talk about your starting wage?
My apologies. Yeah, our starting wage currently is around sixteen dollars, plus the tips are quite high. But that's starting, basic rate. We have a company benefit scheme, offering health coverage. We don't tend to have a huge turnover. Historically, we're one of the, if we're in other states in our previous life, this is my only job now, but in my previous life, we were probably, in Kentucky, we were the highest, highest paramutual taxpayer, and that's with Churchill Downs, with the Kentucky Derby, Teenland, which is one of the biggest tracks in the US. But we were, you know, we were one of the biggest taxpayers, and we were probably the best basic salary-plus-benefits payer, and we had a very low turnover. So, you know, we're very key. We know now, the days of paying minuscule wages, even when there are good tips involved, they're gone. And that's why you see so many businesses struggling now because the wage expectation is higher, and you need to pay good money to get good people, and we only want good people.
Thank you.
Mr. Escobal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. So, Mr. Hughes, you mentioned that you're looking to have it multifaceted entertainment and acreage. Working with other companies, would something like a Topgolf be something that could be put into that type of a horse racing golf and?
Well, I am officially the worst golfer in the world. I cannot hit a ball straight. No, no.
You don't have to?
Yeah, no, I see.
That's a good thing about Topgolf. You don't have to hit it straight there.
Right. It was one of the things that we looked at. Again, it's a huge investment. The problem is, on the way from, from Colorado, from Denver to here, is one of those multi-tier. If that wasn't, we would love to partner with somebody to do that, but that's already really paid it for. But would there be other things? I mean, we're really seriously wide-visioned about what we could do to bring on board, and that's why, and not just adult entertainment, family entertainment. And that's why we bought the forty acres, and currently, we could expand that by another hundred acres because it's available at Swan. We're really open-minded, and we would love to work with the tourism board and yourselves for you to tell us what you need. I know from my conversations with the mayor that we're short of hotel nights. The last, I think, we're short a thousand to fifteen hundred hotel nights. That's why we want to put a hotel. Now, it makes sense. It's good for us because if people are driving an hour and an hour and a half as opposed to going to Black Hall and doing a really terrible, you know, drive, not terrible, I shouldn't say that, but a very difficult drive, but if they're going to come to us, and if they're going to have a really great meal, and if they're going to have some fun, if they're going to watch a show, perhaps they don't want to drive back later, especially in bad weather. So we need to, you know, consider the hotel, which is why we're talking to three major brands.
I follow up, Mr. Mayor, absolutely agree with you on that, but looking at the front range, I just think that that area would probably rather drive fifty miles north rather than that forty miles south to go to that type of a Topgolf entertainment thing. So to me, it seems, plus all the people from Cheyenne that would go, because it's a year-round golf establishment, so I would be pushing for something like similar.
Yeah, but I mean, we are really open to partnerships, and there's no preconceived idea about what those partnerships could be.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other issues? Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. How about from the audience? Anyone else want to speak during this public hearing on the transfer of a liquor license? How about from the governing body? All right, hearing none, the purpose of the public hearing has been met, and I'll assign this item to the finance committee.
Next item is number eight, ordinance on third reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located southwest of the intersection of Ridge Road and Hollin Court.
All right, so if I could, during the committee meeting, the committee voted to postpone this item for two weeks. And if we do that again tonight, which I think we will, that means it'll come back to the committee meeting on the twenty-second of this month, and then the final reading would be on the twenty-seventh. So we don't have to start all over. We'll still be on third reading, and that item would come to the February twenty-seventh city council meeting. The finance or the public services meeting would be Wednesday, the twenty-second at noon in room one oh four of the, of the city building here. So. You brought it in? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Colin, councilmen and women. My name's Cooper Perryman, and I'm here representing AVI engineering. That's at eleven oh three Old Town Lane, Cheyenne, Wyoming. I'm also on, here on behalf of Brad Emmons, who couldn't be here tonight, just to request the two-week postponement of agenda item eight, nine, and fifteen, if I can do that at this moment.
Thank you very much. So maybe it might be a good idea, well, I guess it's up to you guys, but I think our proposal here tonight will be to postpone it, but if you want to come forward and talk, we can do that. I'm just thinking, the conversation we're going to have tonight, we're going to have again on the twenty-seventh, so I don't know that we need to do that twice, but that'll be your choice. Come forward if you want to.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and members of the council. My name is Matthew Casper. I'm here on behalf of Gateway Construction and Ed Rock Development, speaking on behalf of Mr. Stephen. Also requesting items eight, nine, and fifteen to be postponed so that we can conduct some further information gathering from the public and work on some more designs that would satisfy some of the concessions that have been made by members of the local community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. My name is John.
Take that microphone and kind of tilt it up towards you there so the people can hear you.
Oh.
Ah, there you go. Thank you so much. Very good.
Used to talking in a microphone. Yeah, my name is John Pike. I live on Sage Bush Avenue. This was, this issue was brought to my attention by some friends of mine, and I have, it's really just a question of the property that you're talking about. I know it very well. When the man and woman who lived there, when they were active for, I don't know, I'm not sure if they expired. I actually ran over one of their Guinea hens that ran on the road, so I felt really bad about that. I did not hit her or any of her horses, but that was good because I, the Guinea, he kind of messed up my car. But my question is, if you go, annexing this property is probably the best thing that could happen. Right now, that property is so rundown, and there's so much going on right there that annexing it into the city is probably the best thing to do, and I agree with that. The other thing that I have concern about is if you look at the lay of the property, on the south side of the property, there's a great big drainage ditch. It's almost what I would call a draw, and then on the west side of the property, there's a huge hill that if you build a high-density apartment complex, are they going to take that hill and reduce the angle of the hill so that the water, the runoff from that hill, or anything else, does not run into the properties that are to the west? Okay? The other thing is, is annexing the property, is there going to be city-supplied infrastructure? Sewer, water, lights, power. How is that going to affect the current sewer systems in that area? I live in Buffalo Ridge. I just spent about eleven thousand dollars replacing my sewer system, and after talking to the plumbers that work out there, they're like, that area is very old. My house was built in the sixties, so they're starting to see more and more failures of the housing systems.
Sir, we're talking about annexation right now, so I appreciate where you're going, but I think you're talking more about zoning and how the property be used. But to answer your question, I don't think anybody in this room has said no to the annexation. What they're saying no is the way it would be developed.
Right.
If I understand the neighbors, they understand that it's a county pocket that we want to see annexed and see developed, you know, doing that. The Board of Public Utilities has looked at the area. There's plenty of room for the sanitary sewer. We have water. We have all the other amenities that can service that area. The city doesn't pay for that. The developer does, and we just maintain it once they build it.
Okay, that's, that was, that was a concern that was brought up. I just, you know, there was, there was questions asked of me. I didn't know, so I thought I'd bring it to the council, and since you are the-
And just remind those people when they ask those questions, the best people to call is us. We'd be happy to answer those questions directly for them.
That's why I'm coming. I came here tonight to ask the questions so that I can give them the answers and forward this on to you.
I appreciate your coming. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I guess-
Bring that microphone up, please.
Is this just for item eight? I heard you talk about merging eight and nine together, because I have a comment on nine because I can't be-
This is, this is on annexation. If you have a comment on annexation, we'd like to-
You'd mentioned merging eight and nine together, so I just wanted to make sure I was going to have a chance.
We're talking about annexation at this time. Thank you. Anyone else talking here about annexation? All right, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you. I move to postpone until February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, until the February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the governing body. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Cook and seconded by Mr. Seagrave to postpone until the February twenty-seventh meeting. And again, for the audience, what that means is, next Tuesday, this item would come back to our committee at noon in room one oh four Wednesday. That's right, this is Public Service Wednesday. It'd come to our, our Public Service meeting, thank you, at noon, and that recommendation would come to the governing body. And then our final reading, the third reading, would be on now, the twenty-seventh of February. So at this time, we'll take testimony or public comment on the postponement. Does anybody want to talk about the postponement for two weeks from the audience? Yeah, how about from the governing body? Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins through you. I just wanted to say I would be in support of the postponement. I know that in the developers and people that are working to develop that area have been trying to come up with designs that would be amenable to the neighbors and making that as, fit into the neighborhood as much as possible. So I think having a two-week postponement will help to facilitate that.
Mr. Cook, did you have a comment, sir?
Um, if if Dr. Aldridge is is finished, um, no, just echo that that um. You know, it it is clear that uh, you know, the developer has has asked for. Um, a postponement. You know, what is the likelihood that everyone will will be pleased with the work that is done with that? You know, who who knows, but. Um, I think it's proof that um uh the developer wants to um. Um, in good faith, you know, try to work with the the concerns of the uh the neighbors. So um, that's why I plan to. Support this postponement and my hope is that my colleagues, our colleagues will as well. And that we're able to postpone all all three of these um in accordance with the wishes of the developer and our our own staff. Um, who who would like to see that as well.
Anyone else? All right, the motion is to postpone until the twenty seventh of February. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, this item is postponed for two weeks.
Next item is.
Ma'am, you have to come up front here and you're kind of out of order, but let's do it.
I would just had a question there had been Rebecca Murchie, thirty two, twenty two, Thomas Road. I'm trying to learn this whole.
You're doing fine.
Regular moral stuff. There has been talk that the contractor or the builder or whatever developer is trying to make some changes. I have not been spoken to and I have not heard of any of those changes. When will we get that information so that we can have that information prior to the final reading?
Ma'am, I don't know the answer to that. We're not the developer, so um if I were you, I'd call Gateway Construction and ask them that question.
All right.
I honestly, I just don't know. They haven't shared with us their plans and um, you know, there's a representative, I think, here. If you wanted it to. He's got a card, he'd be happy to hand it to you and you guys could have that conversation. I truly don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we yeah, we we were not that a committee made privy to a timeline that that the developer had.
Sure. Next item, please.
Number nine ordinance on third reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from county A one agricultural. And rural residential to NR three neighborhood residential high density for land located southwest of the intersection of Ridge Road and Hollin Court.
All right, guys, because we don't have an annexation, we can't zone, we can't change the zone tonight. So I'm not going to take public comment. We're just going to go to postponement. Because we legally can zone property we don't have in the city limits. And so, Mr. Cook, I take a motion.
I have one.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on uh third and final reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
Um, I move to postpone until the February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three meeting of the governing body.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. All right, we'll go to the audience on the postponement, but really, guys, we don't have a choice. By state law, we can't. We can't do any zoning, but sir, I think you wanted to talk about zoning.
Well, actually, yeah, it's kind of.
Identify yourself, please.
My name is Josh Applegate on Thomas Road. Seems like a little bit of a. You know, last minute type of deal. So is this gonna be a last minute notice? Again, I heard you say we got to address Gateway. But I honestly looked at this right before I came down here. It was on the schedule, so I showed up to attend. I actually cannot be here on the twenty seventh. What I did is actually missed my kid's sporting event tonight because they can't get their act together. I don't know how that's my problem. Like I don't, I understand we're kicking the can down the road, but it seems like it's really unfair that people are giving stuff up. For them. You know, like, I guess so if I can maybe speak in advance, because I cannot be here on the twenty seventh. Um, you know, there's been some.
We'll let you do it real quickly.
Okay, so there's been some talk about being worried about protecting his investment. Well, the rest of us have a house here. I'm worried about my investment as well. Um. You know, who's gonna protect mine? I don't know what you paid for. Let's say four million bucks. Let's say the average home price in that area is four hundred thousand. Let's even say three sixty. So times at least ten people, there's three point six million dollars. I'm guessing it's more than that. Um, it just, like I said, it just doesn't seem fair. I seen a deal on the trying to watch some public service committee. There was a study sent done by Harvard or whatever that doesn't affect. Quite frankly, we're not. Uh, Massachusetts. There was, you know, I looked at a study done by Realtor dot com if you want. And it said that apartments drag down property values, not quite to the bottom, but homeless shelters and strip clubs are what separates us. I mean, so again, we're catering to this. I'm completely opposed to this. We just moved here. I grew up in Lander, Wyoming. I lived the last. Thirteen years in Denver. I left there because I do not want to raise my kids in Denver. I commute for work to Denver. And like I said, traffic is is gonna be a nightmare. I mean, traffic on Del Range, ninety percent of people run red lights. We don't protect that. So now you want me to try to protect my kids running, you know, when you got that much traffic? So again, I I am adamantly opposed to this for the, you know, just to protect your investment. That's not my problem. You shouldn't have got the cart before the horse, I guess. Um.
You made your point. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anybody else on the postponement? Anyone else want to speak to the postponement? How about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor of the postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, we are postponed then until the uh February twenty seventh meeting of the governing body. And again, that will be at the Wednesday twenty second meeting for uh you folks who want to come and talk to the community. And we have one more item on this, which is the final plat. But again, we can't plant items that aren't in the city limits, so we will not be doing any action on that tonight either. Next item, please.
Ten ordinance on third reading annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located east of Southwest Drive, north of I eighty.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this annexation um requested by the owner of the property? Hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the annexation. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Mr. Royball.
Aye.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabal.
Aye.
Mr. Laborn.
Aye.
Dr. Rennie.
All right, this ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number eleven ordinance on third reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from county. L I light industrial to L I light industrial for land located east of Southwest Drive, north of I eighty.
All right, state law says when you annex land, you gotta zone it. So here we are zoning it to a city L I zone. Does anybody in the audience want to speak to that? Hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the zone change. All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Rennie. Mr. Royball. Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabal.
Aye.
And Mr. Laborn.
Uh, the zone change is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number twelve ordinance on third reading vacating West nineteenth Street, west of Grant Avenue, city of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming. Located south of Old Happy Jack Road, west of Missile Drive.
Apparently, we plotted this in eighteen ninety, but we never built it. So the thought is we don't need it. So we're gonna vacate it. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak to that vacation? All right, hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading and I so move. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body. All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Laborn.
Aye.
Dr. Rennie. Mr. Royball. Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
And Mr. Escabal.
Aye.
This vacation is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is thirteen ordinance on first reading amending section one point three of the Unified Development Code, U D C, amending. The enforcement regulations of the U D C and making other conforming amendments.
Or refer this one to the Public Services Committee?
Fourteen ordinance on first reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from M U B mixed use business. And C B community business to C B community business for land located between Old Happy Jack Road and Lincoln Way, west of Mistle Drive.
Also referred to Public Services Committee.
Number fifteen, resolution authorizing the Marin City Clerk to sign a final plat for Del Range Edition, six filing, a replat of a portion of Track twenty five. Del Range Edition, city of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming.
All right, we can't plant land that we don't own and we didn't do the annexation, so we're just gonna go right to Mr. Cook. Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt and I so move. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the uh, excuse me, I move to postpone until the February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three meeting and governing body.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak to the two week postponement? Looks like they all went home. All right, how about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor of the postponement, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the final plat is postponed for two weeks.
Next item is number seventeen, resolution directing city staff to prepare a memorandum of understanding between the city of Cheyenne and W J E LLC. Regarding acceptance of tracks one, two, and three, Saddle Ridge eighteenth filing subdivision as open space and defining. Private maintenance responsibility.
Mr. Edwards, did you want to speak to this tonight? It's that time. Please. Welcome, sir.
I can figure out how to work the mic there. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council and thank you for your consideration of this item tonight. I could pass out a brief exhibit that I wish I would have had at the Public Service Committee. I would appreciate it. Is that okay?
Please, sir, just give it to Mr. White and we'll pass him down.
Uh, so if I could quickly give a little bit of history about how Saddle Ridge was historically developed. I went back and look and looked and we broke ground in two thousand and seven on the Saddle Ridge neighborhood and. That was pre U D C, which was adopted in two thousand and twelve. So there wasn't, uh, to my recollection, there there wasn't a set way of donating property along with residential. Uh, development at that time. And so we worked out a program with the Parks Department whereby we donated a significant amount of property. Uh, and we would also build the lion's share of the improvements uh in the open space parcels that. That we developed prior to the U D C and and after the U D C. So our method was, we would. Build all of the improvements, all the pathways, all the grading, uh, all of the landscape rock, things of that nature. In exchange for city maintaining those parcels uh prior to the completion of of the improvements. Uh, we feel this partnership was a successful one. Uh, to date, we have built two point two miles total of official city greenway. That is within Saddle Ridge. One point five miles of that greenway were a hundred percent paid by us as the developers. Point seven miles of that two point two was done with the fifty fifty cost share with the city. What's important about that is is the city really had no out of pocket costs for for that fifty percent contribution. Uh, because we were, again, we worked out a system with the Parks Department where we collected community facility fees. Within the homes of the Saddle Ridge neighborhood that would go to the city's financial contribution for for those improvements. So. We felt and we still feel that that was a really good system for for everybody. So. Uh, fast forward seventeen years, uh, here we are at Saddle Ridge eighteenth filing. Uh, it's a significant milestone for us. It's been a pleasure to to develop uh the the subdivision by and large. Uh, but it was communicated to us uh during the city approvals of this that the. The city has really limited maintenance resources and their policy has changed as in in regards to. How they uh accept or manage uh open space parcels. So we agreed to form a a neighborhood HOA on on this last filing uh to address the maintenance aspect of of the open space. And so we've done that. Uh, we we have an official HOA in place, uh, ready to go when those homes are are ready. Um, why it's important for us, uh, and we feel the city for the city to retain ownership only. Of these open space parcels, that's important to note and and maybe you've seen in your documents there, we're not asking for any maintenance. Uh, responsibilities from the city at all. Um, we're asking for the city's ownership uh for a couple reasons. Number one, we'd really prefer to stay consistent with how the the seventeen year history of the project was developed. It's pretty difficult to change this one little piece at at the very last stage, not only from a development standpoint, but. Also from the neighborhood standpoint, it it's difficult to have uh eighty five, ninety percent of a neighborhood that does not have an HOA. And then the last percentage that does. These these last open space parcels, I feel are the most dynamic in the neighborhood. Uh, they're the most topographically aggressive. I I was born and raised here and we struggled to find places to sled growing up. I'm I'm not familiar of. Uh, of any other uh city park that that would have these type of topographic features. We specifically set them aside uh for not only sledding in the winter, uh, mountain bike options in the summer. Um, but the other really nice feature of of some of the peaks of the hills is there's tremendous views looking back at all of the city of Cheyenne. You can see the Capitol, Frontier Park, the airport. You can even see Long's Peak on on a clear day. So we designed uh the majority of homes that we could to feature these views and we also wanted the public to be able to enjoy these as well. And so one of the the most exciting things for me that I've been looking forward to is to establish a a picnic area. On one of the peaks of of the prominent hills and uh. So that we could invite the public up there to to enjoy that, to have lunch, uh, to watch the Thunderbirds when they come back. Uh, which I'm hoping is very soon. Um, but the 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 main heart of the open space areas, as I said, it's it's significant hills. I mean, we're talking forty fifty foot drops in some areas. And as you're looking, this uh brings. Brings me to the exhibit that that I handed out. Uh, you can see the picnic area, hopefully, kind of in the center. That's that's the hill that that one slated for. The pink arrows uh represent sledding patterns that we're wanting to encourage. It's it's an eastern western sledding pattern. To discourage folks from going towards Wilderness Trail, which is just to the south. Um, if this is accepted, uh, we also plan on enhancing those areas around where it shows where the future greenway is. Uh, with with the yellow dash line. Uh, so going back to why we feel strongly, the the city should retain ownership of these. Uh, the other one is governmental immunity. Um, the the nature of of these features that we're excited to offer lends to some liability issues from from the private side. And you know, you you think of the greenway, many areas in the city, there's there's some steep areas because of the natural topography and there's some liability there. And that's that's why that that uh immunity piece is very important to us. Maybe the most important piece is if if we go a different route and the HOA were to own these parcels. We feel it would create conflict, not only with the existing neighborhood, wanting to come over and and utilize these areas. Uh, but the public in general, uh, as I mentioned at the at the committee meeting, we we often catch people out there walking their dogs. Uh, to this day, uh, we have our no trespassing signs up, but we don't run them off there. Um, it's an attractive place. Um, another thing I mentioned at the Finance Committee meeting in terms of maintenance, it's, we've never had to maintain it at all. The 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 native vegetation is much like the northern, the large northern park that's by Metal Arc Elementary School. And that's kind of what we envision. You you have those kind of informal soft surface trails that that go through that native area. There's cactus out there, uh, believe it or not, uh, you know, not big, but there's a lot of cactus. Um, the point, uh, the the residential neighborhood here in Cheyenne, the point has a system like this. Their their main open space area is actually owned by the city and their HOA maintains it. We just see a, we see a lot of win-win here and and so we respectfully request the city's consideration of of retaining ownership of these parcels.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I appreciate all you do for us.
Hey, you bet. I can be available.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Seagrave.
Yes, through you, please. Uh, you just stated that the point maintains public areas. I'm I'm not familiar with that. Can you explain that?
That's that's my knowledge, yes. And it was clarified for us at the committee meeting that.
What areas are you talking about?
I'm talking the the main, what I would consider the main uh park area for for the point, kind of the centralized location that that has.
By the Long Gardenia?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, I, I believe the city maintains that. Mr. Sanchez is here, maybe he can, that is a city park.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I don't, I do not believe that's maintained by any homeowners association.
Jason, nod your head. Is it a yes or no? Yep, city maintains it. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience like to speak to, uh, item number seventeen? Um, donation of property for, uh, for open space. All right, hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt an ISO move.
Second.
That's seconded by Mr. Escabel. All right, comments from members of the governing body. Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor, I spoke against this at committee. I've spoken with staff and staff is not interested in, in this area. They have no use for it. Um, primarily what we're going to do is give governmental immunity to a small neighborhood or terrain that is very difficult. As we know, uh, right now, they're proposing an HOA that would, would pay to maintain the picnic area, et cetera. As we know, over time, HOAs struggle. Um, I would guess that somewhere down the trail, if we own it, we're gonna take care of it. And I see absolutely no reason for the city to adopt this property. Uh, it has very limited use. Um, we can certainly ask staff to come up and talk to us about it. Um, but I am a firm no on this. Um, it, I just don't see what, what it's going to do for us. Um, in committee, we heard that people from all over the community could come and have picnic here. Most people in the community won't even know that this is a public area. It's very secluded. It's, it's in a, in a subdivision. Um, I just don't see how the city benefits from this in any way. Thank you.
Other comments? From the governing body? Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins for you. I'm just curious if, do we have this type of arrangement anywhere else in our community that anyone knows of?
I'm not aware of any. Does anyone else know of any other similar? Charles is shaking his head, Jason.
Jason Sanchez, Community Reckon Events, uh, Mr. Mayor through you, Councilwoman Aldrich. So there is an M O U for the enhanced landscape in the point. So the, there was a greenway path in the, in the point. The folks that live in that area wanted to create an enhanced landscape. They wanted to plant flowers, shrubs, trees. And at that time, we said we cannot maintain an enhanced landscape. We could, you know, we were doing the maintenance of the greenway path itself, mowing one pass of the native grass off each side of the path. So there is an M O U with the point subdivision. They have an HOA and a, a company that maintains that. But that M O U is to maintain their enhanced landscape. Not, not what we generally take care of on the greenway. Um, I hope that answers that question. Just one point of clarification, the park off of Gardenia in the point is maintained by the city. There is another park within the point that is maintained by their HOA. It's a private park and it's my understanding you have to live there and be part of the HOA to reserve it, use it. Um, so I hope that answers those questions.
Thank you, sir. Charles?
Mayor and Councilwoman Aldrich, um, we do have one more example in the community. It is with sweetgrass. Uh, with sweetgrass, they have their enhanced landscaping features in the roundabouts surrounding the Greenway Trail. And we developed that, um, M O U and that agreement within the last few years and that gives us responsibility of maintaining the greenway path and mowing as we typically would the greenway adjacent. Anything outside of the six foot, um, mow strips on the side is responsible with the Sweet, Sweet Grass Homeowners Association. So that is another, um, scenario that we're aware of in the community.
Dr. Aldrich?
A follow-up question, Mayor Collins for you. If we choose not to agree to this M O U, are we going to have the Greenway Committee or, um, someone coming back to us in six months, nine months, a year, two years, asking us to purchase this land or the greenway to be connected from the existing greenway? It looks like uh, almost out to Christensen Road. I'm guessing this is Christensen and Pershing here and then connecting it over on Farthing, um, road? Is that, uh, is this actually a desirable connection that we would seek if we say no to this M O U?
Mr. Bloom?
Mayor through you to Dr. Aldrich. Um, no, the greenway connections that are necessary to complete the system at this time, they can be handled within the existing rights of way and within existing properties, um, and eastwards the city as right now.
Thank you.
Other comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Escabel? Uh, this is the first time I've heard, heard of this, but, uh, to me, it sounds like it's exciting because, you know, we have so many people now that are into extreme sports. They have teenagers. You struggle to get them off the couch, off, off their Game Boys or their PlayStations or they'd rather do things on an Oculus in, in virtual reality. And I think this is an opportunity for something Cheyenne doesn't have. Um, so I, I think that what the natural landscapes will take care of itself. And I think that, you know, people that are into extreme sports, they have a very a closeness with the land that they're working on and they're playing in. So they always do what they can to take care of it. Oh, I think it's an anonymity that we don't have and we may not have another opportunity to have something like this. It's just um, we gotta look at the future and think about what, what the youngsters really want.
Other comments? All right, we have a motion to, uh, of a direct staff to start this M O U. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I see the hands of the nose. Dr. Aldrich and Mr. Seagrave are knows, the, uh, resolution is adopted.
Next item is, excuse me, twenty-seven A. Real estate purchase agreement between Kaiser Incorporated and the city of Cheyenne or the purchase of real property generally located south of Atlantic Drive between Cottonwood Drive and Centennial Drive and north of the Union Pacific Railroad, Laramie County consisting of approximately four point oh one acres more or less.
All right, we're gonna go to the audience and see if there's anyone wants to talk to us about purchasing some land that we can use to extend our greenway. Mr. Bloom?
Mayor, members of, of council, Charles Blum, Plan Development Director, I just want to clarify that, um, between the committee meeting and this meeting, we did correct a scribner's error within the council packet and within the agreement itself. Um, all the numbers that are reflected in the agreement are the same number, which is four point zero zero nine acres more or less. Uh, the terminology more or less is a standard way surveyors describe properties. Actually, if you look at the annexation and zoning maps that you saw on your earlier agenda items, you'll note that in the legal description, it ends in more or less. So it's the, the common terminology. I want to let you know that, that the agreement has been updated. Four point zero zero nine acres more or less is consistently reflected throughout that document.
And that's what the substitute will have verified, sir?
Correct. Oh, we're doing it by substitute.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Appreciate the heads up on that. Anyone else in the audience? Hearing none, Mr. White, it's you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-eight thousand and I so move.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Escabel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I moved to amend by substitute dated February eleventh, twenty twenty-three. My colleagues, the substitute, uh, was just as Mr. Bloom, um, described it. There was some consternation on the part of some committee members on the language of more or less. So uh, that has been clarified.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Escabel. We're gonna go out to the audience and talk about, uh, just changing our scribner's error to make sure that it was four point zero zero nine acres. We're clear on that. Does anybody want to speak to that? How about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The substitute is adopted. We're back on the main motion. Comments from members of the governing body? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The real estate, uh, purchase agreement is approved as amended.
Next item is twenty-nine B, consideration of bid number S dash three dash twenty-three for an agreement between the city of Cheyenne and Pole Mountain Electric Incorporated for the Seventeenth Street Lighting Improvement Projects Phase Two Project.
Well, this is an exciting project starting to come to completion. Does anybody in the audience want to speak to it? Hearing none, Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed four hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
There was a, a motion, I move to direct staff to fund the balance in an amount not to exceed two hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents from the twenty-twenty-one specific purpose option tax fund for downtown projects.
Second.
So that's an amendment, sir?
Yes, sir, that was an amendment.
Okay, so it was moved by Mr. White and seconded by Mr. Escabel. Comments from members of the governing body where we identify the funding source for the second half of those dollars? How about from the governing body? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The substitute or the amendment is approved and we're back on the main motion. Members of governing body? Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, I just, uh, wanted to congratulate staff and, and I know that many of us on the dais here have been uh, very interested in this project and supported its completion. We've all received questions over the years on how come this one block was not, uh, completed and this will, this will get it done. And I think, uh, we should all be happy about that and very much, uh, celebrate the, uh, final piece of, uh, this project.
Dr. Aldrich?
Uh, Mayor Collins for you. Um, I'd like to echo my colleague from Ward One and also, um, thank the city staff for taking in the consideration, um, looking at LED lights and, uh, energy savings as we get ready to replace all of the existing lights as well as add these new ones.
Any other comments from members? Mr. Laborn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a point here. Um, Pole Mountain Electric is owned by my brother John. And I'm not involved in him business in any way whatsoever. He wouldn't, uh, he wouldn't be interested in me being involved in his business and I'm certainly not. So there's no question of conflict of interest here. Um, and so I feel it's appropriate for me to vote on this because there is no conflict of interest, but I did want to make that point. Thank you.
Are you saying you'd have a hard time between the red elements, the red light or wires and the, and the yellow wire, sir? Appreciate that. Anybody else in the governing body? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the, uh, bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? This bid is approved as amended.
Next item is thirty-eight A, appointments of Sharon Brian Kozak and John Brody to the Laramie County Juvenile Services Joint Powers Board.
Would entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Uh, Mr. Seagrave and seconded by Dr. Aldrich. All right, all those in favor of the appointments, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? The appointments are approved.
Next item is voucher report.
All right, is there anyone here to, to talk about the vouchers? I miss Mr. Ridgeway. He's not here today. Anybody on the governing body? All right, next item, please.
Notice of emergency procurement. In accordance with the city of Cheyenne purchasing policy, an emergency procurement has been authorized by the by Mayor Collins for the emergency fleet maintenance facility sanitary sewer repair. The emergency repair has been authorized to Sewer and Drain Repair Specialist LLC for a total of eighty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Man clerk, if I could, just so they know, the sewer line, uh, failed in our building and we don't have any working potties. Um, I'm figuring that's a pretty important thing for our employees, so we approve that under emergency. I mean, but I understand correctly, the repairs are in the process of being done.
Announcement of a public hearing to be held February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at six P M in City Council Chambers, twenty-one oh one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming and via electronic conference meeting for renewal applications for existing city liquor licenses, retail restaurant, limited retail, resort, bar and grill licenses, micro brewery, satellite distillery, special malt beverage and winery permits filed with the city clerk's office. Announcement that due to the President's Day holiday on Monday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-three, regularly scheduled city council committee meetings will instead be held as follows. Finance Committee will be, meet at noon on Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three and Public Services Committee will meet at noon on Wednesday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Both mil- meetings will be held at twenty-one oh one O'Neal Avenue, room one oh four and via electronics conference meeting. Announcement of a public hearing to be held February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at six P M in the City Council Chambers, twenty-one oh one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming and via electronic conference meeting to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming statute fifteen dash four, or fifteen dash one dash four oh two exists for nine point eight seven acres of land situated in portions of Sunny Side Edition and Sunny Side Edition Second Filing, Section twelve, Township thirteen North Range sixty-seven West, six P M, Laramie County, Wyoming, other business.
Adam clerk, I understand we have another item for the agenda that I'd like to read in and assign to committee, please?
Yes, donation agreement between the city of Cheyenne and Union Pacific Railroad Company to accept a donation of selected fleet railroad cars.
We'll assign this one to the Finance Committee. And now we have other business. Anyone in the audience want to speak under other business? Please come forward, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council? My name is M. Hopkins and I live at thirteen seventeen Jesse. I've been a resident of Cheyenne since twenty eighteen.
Welcome, sir. I heard you came from Kemmer.
Yes, sir. I was gonna ask you if you knew where the home of J. C. Penney was.
We do.
And, uh, as a result of that, um, yeah, I am approaching you and just ask some questions. I, uh, was fortunate enough to serve two years in the council in Cameron, six years as mayor. I pretended to be the city administrator for about three of the six years because we couldn't keep one. But my problem. Pardon me? Yeah, pluses and minuses, sir. I will tell you. I talked to Mr. Casey a little bit about it from time to time as I look for people to have, sorry, I digress. Uh, just curious about, uh, we have a snow removal policy over there. You have a snow policy here about plowing and so forth. And, uh, I understand with hundreds of miles of roads, you can't do everything. Ours is we can, we have to do the, you know, emergency route, just like you do. We do the, um, make sure buses get through, things like that. Uh, I did notice during the last snowstorm from a couple of times that buses were stuck. Uh, I don't understand that, but part of our charge as a city was providing services and that to the, to the citizens, to the citizens. And that's an important thing. And, you know, we, we don't seem to make that a priority here in some ways. I know we have to ignore uh, some of the ideas about snow removal because, uh, you can't do it here. I mean, first of all, you don't have the regulations to allow. We have off-street parking, things like that. We can do the city in probably twelve hours. But we know it can't happen here. That's not a thing. I don't question that. I, I do have one. Uh, I did notice what we do allow the baseball parking lots during the winter. And I, I see no understanding. I, I mean, I still question the, the parkway and stuff, but I see how important it is. We talk about acquisition, things like that. How many people use it, things like that. But the baseball field parking lots in the wintertime, I don't understand. Maybe there's a reason for it. I have no idea, but I was, as a mayor, if I drove around town and saw a guy's plowing the parking lot, I'd answer questions. And, uh, as to what the priorities are. And we have a, we have a specific policy. So I mean, the, the my street department would have, they followed their department comes from the council. Okay, I'm not calling them a complaint of them. I wouldn't do that. You people make the, you make the policies, you make the decisions and I would, I won't waste their time. I just wanted to ask you, but that, that was just an observation and I was, um, very curious if that's part of the policy and particularly why. I know you don't have to answer.
We're, we're happy to answer. I think Mr. Sanchez is gonna come up. You know, I was thinking the other day when you take the snow off there and then the freezing thaw happens, you don't have as much damage. But I don't think that that's probably who the calculus they went into, but Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Mayor, Jason Sanchez, Community Reckon Events. So we have like a, a Dutch football complex, for example, our forestry maintenance building is tucked in the back corner. So we do plow to get in, have access for our staff to get in and do So we do plow to get in, have access for our staff to get in and do their jobs. Brimmer, we have an access point on the north side for the VA. So they get to the back on that side. North Park, similar things. We have a maintenance building on the south end of the, on the south end of the park. A couple of other reasons we do that. If we don't, it becomes a playground for some folks to come and do donuts in a lot of our parking lots. And inevitably, they hit our fences and we spend a lot of time making repairs to that. If the snow's not there, they're not as tempted to sit and spin donuts and we have less damage to repair after the snowstorms.
Are you saying it's cheaper to to plow it than it is to fix it?
That is correct. And so please know that we do have some maintenance facilities at a lot of these areas, and so it is for staff access as well.
Hope that answers, Mr. Mayor. And just, just so you know, too, we have, we do have a snow plan and we have about three hundred and seventy-five miles, I think, of roads.
Seventy-five, obviously, no, you're well over a hundred.
Yeah, but we're eleven, twelve hundred lane miles of roads.
Twenty-eight point nine.
Yep, there you go. And so for us, we 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 have, we have priorities. And and for us, it's it's arterials when the, when, when the snow first comes. And then secondary to that, it's, you know, it's the bus routes and things. And then after that, we 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 focus on downtown. When our focus on downtown is hard because we have to actually haul that snow away. And so that takes us a couple of days. And quite frankly, we don't get that many days here where the neighborhoods are are that bad. Now, this last couple of snows didn't get warm enough in between. I felt like I was living in North Dakota again. You know, normally it melts and we're good, but but that is our snow plan and in our, and our employees follow that pretty well.
Oh, they do. I I don't question if that's your plan they do follow. You know, and downtown is extremely important. I do, I do understand. We use windrows and then picked it up and it worked real simple. But we had off-street parking, like I said, those things. My kids live here. We have on the east side and to get to their properties like driving through K O A campground. You can't have a snow removal, honestly, with the campground.
Understood, sir. Well, we're excited that you chose to come to Cheyenne. Thank you and thanks for coming and visiting us.
Thank you for your time. I hope I didn't waste any time.
We're happy, we're happy to have you, sir.
How you doing, sir?
Look forward to seeing you again. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else in the audience like to speak under other business? All right, how about the governing body? Dr. Aldrich?
Mayor Collins, through you, I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have council and coffee this Saturday morning from nine to eleven at Das Bog over off of East Pershing and College and Ward Three. Also, a kudos goes out to Ken Escabel on the council from Ward Three, who won first place for his green chili at the Boys and Girls Club Chili Challenge on Friday night. And we also had Mrs. Cook, who did white chili and Mr. Laborn, who did red chili. And with the effort by our council members, we were able to, again, once again, second year in a row, receive the People's Choice second place overall. And it really represented, I think, the city council and the City of Cheyenne well, even though we were out in the county, so. And I think the plaques are there in front of you.
Where did the commissioners finish?
They didn't even show. They didn't even show, but the plaques are there in front of you, Mayor Collins, to present to the city.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, through you. Dr. Rini, just so you're aware, I I did go ahead and point that out from the stage that the the commissioners didn't, didn't have any entries this year. So I'm sure there will probably be some retaliation coming my way. But no, it was a great night. It was, it was fun. That is a great venue. They did a very nice job with that. The the county did. So it's, it's a great place for it and and obviously it's for a worthy cause, but we, we did, we did a nice job.
Mr. Mayor?
Congratulations, Mr. Escabel.
Thank you.
Sir?
And a couple of shout outs for us getting second place on People's Choice. We had a couple corporations that donated, small businesses, so American National Bank and Alf's Pub.
Good. Nice job on the-
No more chili left. Can I retire?
No. No, not if you win. You got to come back and defend.
Yeah, retire on top.
Nope. How about anybody else? All right, everybody, thank you so much and we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.